Is the air conditioner going off?
It's the.
I wondered. Right with the one.
Perfect time to test the joke.
This is number eleven. We're not having a reading on it. Was that why? No reading on this, but we have it.
Yeah, it's actually the ordinance eleven was not on our agenda.
I'm gonna add it to the agenda.
Were we doing it? So we had to, Diana had to give it to us. That's what that is. This is ordinance eleven.
But we're not having a reading on it tonight?
Yes, we are.
We are.
It's a public hearing.
Yeah. You got a public hearing on there.
Oh, yeah. And ordinance. Fourteen.
Fourteen down there.
What's going on? It didn't have any of this stuff.
Okay. That's why we got it separate.
May and never is a tune. I think we did four hundred thousand fifty dollars.
Second largest.
Second largest?
Wow.
What year was the largest?
Like two thousand nineteen?
Oh, back in nineteen? That makes sense. Okay. Okay, it is seven o'clock. August ninth. This is our regular city council meeting, and yes, we're on time for this one. So thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Can I have roll call, please?
Michael Hillman.
Here.
Scott Canel.
Here.
Chuck Harmon.
Here.
Bob Olman.
Here.
I've heard it. Chris Bailey. The Jim Park.
Here. All right. Please stand with us for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, we have an agenda in front of us. There was ordinance eleven that was adding in under ordinance second reading.
And there would be a public hearing.
With a public hearing, so we'll do the. Okay, we go right here. It's supposed to go. Is there anything else that council would like to add or to our agenda tonight?
Mayor?
Yes.
May I just make a note? If you add that ordinance eleven under ordinance second reading with the public hearing, what I might suggest taking item eleven, the planning, community development, B, for the boy, and deferring that until that point in the agenda.
I'm sorry, where?
The staff report on the zone.
Cemetery.
Let's put that actually with the public.
Okay, so do the public hearing there? Report on the rezoning cemetery. Is that what you're saying? Put the public hearing there?
Uh, no, I'm suggesting take that staff report and put it under the public hearing in the.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna move, uh, planning, community development, B.
Yes, sir.
Down to the public hearing under ordinance second reading.
Please, thank you. That's great.
Thank you, Carmen.
You bet.
Anything else? And then at the end, if Bob's got a history lesson, we'll hear that. And then I'd like to talk at the end of the meeting about masked hour meetings that we're having in person. We'll put that through. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve the agenda for the August ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody raise their hand.
Zoom in.
Raise your hand and say ayes when you see it. All right. Okay, does anybody on council feel they have a conflict of interest tonight? Okay, hearing then, we will move to the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes from July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? When that motion passes, we will move to the bills. And do I have a motion?
I've moved to approve the bills to August ninth, twenty twenty-one.
And do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, discussion. Any questions about bills, certifications? All right, can I have roll call, please?
Michael Hillman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Bob Olman.
Yes.
I've heard it. Bailey.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes. All right, I don't have any scheduled public comment. Did anybody sign up for unscheduled public comment?
Yes, sir.
No. Okay. Uh, we will now move down to, uh, planning and community development. We have Jared here with us tonight. Uh, he gave us a staff report. Um, wanna go over that real quick with us, Jared, and answer any questions the council has.
Absolutely. So before you this evening is a brief staff memo that I shared with client commission and now with the city council. I have a couple items. We are, uh, talking with the owner of, uh, twenty-eight-hundred Minor Street about, uh, you know, some options potentially. He's, they are interested in maybe moving forward with something, uh, new. I have a tip for community, as you know, uh, passed last, uh, at the city council last meeting. Uh, annexation of the Idaho Springs Cemetery is before you this evening. Uh, post-construction alignment of Cara Boulevard also before you this evening. Then, uh, working with the developer or the proposal for goal bigger field, block fifty-seven. Uh, and that'll be coming before you in the, in the future here. I also have a number of other activities listed. I'm happy to take any questions.
Right, council, is anybody any questions for Jared?
Well, yeah, I don't have a phone, but you've had meetings with, um, several developers. One was a twenty-eight-hundred something Minor Street.
Yeah.
Could you elaborate on, um, what they're planning and what, what they're thinking about as far as the development in that area?
So I don't have a full-blown proposal. Um, I don't have a, uh, application yet either. They've just submitted a couple different, uh, site plans. And they're trying to work within our ordinances. So it is residential in nature in that area. Um, yeah, and so they haven't finalized any supplemental application yet.
Yeah, but you don't know what kind of development. But when you say residential, you're talking about homes or apartments or?
Probably something in a duplex nature.
So our, um, several months, it's five months, over a year ago, um, developer for that property went to planning commission. Running it up, zoning for the density, and it was denied, and they decided not to bring it to council, so they withdrew their application.
Okay.
And, uh, believe what Jared's telling is that they're working on something that property's entitled to do, right, that he can do without getting up zoning or anything.
Okay, then you had, uh, I believe another, uh, developer, so, so, sort of, uh, up there.
Sort of pre-talents?
Okay, he's been back and forth a few times. Um, he discussed what the conversations were about as far as what his plans may be. He keeps on changing them. I only ask because, uh, he's been around for a while. We're just curious what he's up to. His plans, he changes mine here or there.
Yeah, he's been acquiring as to what he is, um, entitled to do on the property.
Right.
So with what's up there, and so I've been doing some research and trying to establish exactly what was, uh, approved in the past. And I'm trying to give him more or less a route that he could, uh, look into.
Okay, had you found out what it was zoned before, what there was zoned before, correct?
Correct, it was zoned before.
Yeah, and what was the zoning then?
Oh, shoot, off the top of my head, I believe it's R one.
Which is individual home?
Yes, single family.
Okay.
There's a couple other allowances, but primarily single family.
And that's where, that's, I mean, it's all was developed there.
Yeah, if, um, if they wanted to change something, it would have to come through a different process.
Right, and then, and then you mentioned, uh, in summary, that you've been dealing with several different, uh, developers. Can you say how many more developers are coming to us, not specifically as far as what, but how many developers may be interested in addition to what you spoke about?
Uh, I, that's a, that's a good question. I, you know, I speak with a number of individuals on a daily basis for a wide variety of, of inquiries. Have several people that are interested in the administrative plat process, which, because they have a couple lots that has a parcel line that doesn't quite meet, um, the setbacks or something like that, that they want to rectify. And I talked to a couple other developers about a few other parcels, uh, two or three probably.
Well, I guess that's my question. When you say developer, it's not necessarily someone like, uh, or points to, you know, that, of that capacity. It could be individuals, uh, that's one or two questions.
Yeah, I guess I'd use that as a broader, uh, in a broader context.
Yeah, okay, I'm just curious. Yeah, I guess, you terminology.
Okay.
Okay, understood. All right, thank you.
I've got one for you too, uh, and it's just because this would probably be a perfect time to discuss it in a preliminary type of discussion with the applicants of, uh, twenty-eight-hundred Minor. Uh, May first last year, the Colorado Motor Home Park Act was updated. And, uh, a couple of big changes. There's now a twelve-month notification that must be given to the residents if it's going to undergo a scrape. You know, to go in with condos or some other type of residential. The other thing too, that was a real big change, now the residents, uh, have a certain timeframe in which to exercise, uh, an option to purchase the park, and that, that, the very, very major, uh, change. I'm not sure if the applicant, uh, would be aware. Uh, just be a good time to, to look into that. Just my advice. Interesting, thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, Jared, so four points is reapplied then, yes?
Yes, they have on their stuff down.
Good.
Any other questions for Jared? All right, thanks, Jared. Good work. And now we will move down to city attorney.
Uh, where were you going to? I'm sorry, uh, the Young Ranch.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, and actually, the, um, the Colorado Boulevard, did you take that? I didn't see.
Yeah, Colorado, I'm sorry, Colorado Boulevard.
Yeah, um, if I may, uh, before you this evening is an item that it's a little bit of a special process that doesn't require a public hearing, but it does require a plan commission, city council review and approval. And, uh, the plan commission has recommended approval of this, uh, document. But basically what it is, is when, uh, Cara Boulevard was reconstructed a few years ago, uh, some of the monumentation wasn't extremely well defined, some of the pins weren't really, uh, placed, uh, seemingly well. And, uh, we have some drawings, but this document really formalizes exactly where those parcel lines are, exactly where the right of way is. And I believe they've placed some additional monumentation out in the field for, uh, to be able to find some pins in the future. So, um, but we're trying to finalize that right of way in this document. Uh, and get it then recorded. And so that's what's before you this evening is just, it's kind of a cleanup item.
So what happened with that is we had a council member go look and found out that he owned half of I-70, and said, wait a minute, what the heck's going on?
The surveyor just told me it wasn't finished. The road.
Okay, any more questions, uh, on that?
Council, if you, it's just another comment. If you remember, then the few, uh, few years ago, when we put significant funds into the Minnesota Creek Road, uh, we had the, as an initial step to that, do, do this very thing, which was by ordinance, establish where the boundaries were. Uh, the same thing that we did then, only difference is we were sort of doing it then before we did the construction. And this time, we sort of found out we needed to be clear about it after we did the Colorado Boulevard reconstruction.
It just finalizes this project.
Indeed. So everybody kind of on down the line gets, gets, gets real certainty as to where the boundaries are, at least as far as Colorado Boulevard. We were asked a little bit before, maybe about what is this due for owners along Colorado Boulevard as to the perpendicular, uh, boundary lines, and does that give certainty to most folks? And absolutely not. We make no representations as to any boundaries in between private parties along the road. Our concern with this ordinance and this particular plat is clearly setting the boundary to the right of way. That's it.
And we have this under our ordinance first reading tonight as well?
Yes, sir. Fourteen.
Okay, any other questions on the alignment of Colorado Boulevard? Now, the next item, the Young Ranch Resource Corrid. I don't know if anybody has gotten a call or an email about this. And if you did, I'm surprised because what came of this was the city was supposed to be notified of this going on, and we never were notified. Um, I believe John Curtis was in a, in a, uh, a meeting and heard about this and brought it to our attention. Um, we are supposed to get a formal letter, and they would like some comments back. If you're not, I, I know a little bit, probably just enough to get me in trouble with this, and Jared, Jared, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, if I, if I may. So I found out about this via a resident, and they brought to my attention. I called the state. And the state said, oh, you're too far away. You don't, you, you, the city of Idaho Springs doesn't get noticed. I said, well, there's property in, in Valley. That's an action to the city. But, oh, whoops. So, uh, they have now provided us a letter with, giving us a notice, uh, timeframe. So I believe I included the letter in your packet from the state. And it gives the city until August twenty-second to make comments, if you so choose. If you do make comments, um, that allows you to be a part of their next meeting. That allows the city. If we do not make comment, we can, uh, witness that next meeting, but we cannot participate in it.
Are these comments collectively or individually?
I think it can be either, either be either. Um, I know as a city, the city itself make comments, and that would, uh, probably be the strongest form of comment, and that's, the city was the entity that was notified as well. Um, but I believe they will also take separate comment, but that separate comment, since it's outside of their, I know I'm, it's very confusing, but since they're outside their comment window for individual, those individuals now would not be able to attend that me, or not be able to speak at that meeting. They could attend, but they wouldn't be able to speak at it. That comment period is over. This is just a comment period for the city.
So council, do you feel that we need to have a work session and come up with some comments to, to send to the state?
So they're, they're doing basically at like, Mafo's three on the Parkway, right? What, Rock Quarry, they're, a rock quarry, and I believe it, uh, it butts into Fry Quarry. That's where we're here.
About four hundred acres.
It's four hundred acres, yeah. Well, there's not much of a, not much of a distance from, it's very close to Fry Quarry.
So what's our concern?
Well, uh, I would say, I don't know if you've heard about the Green Mountain Project? That was up at Empire, where they were gonna have to put a rock quarry up there, and they were talking about it. And some of the same stuff, you know, we've got, you know, the trucks are not gonna go through Central City, and those trucks are gonna be coming down Central City Parkway. You know, there's gonna be a lot of trucks, the dust, the noise, you know.
My biggest concerns?
Well, my, my, my bigger concern is environmental.
Yeah.
Um, watershed, and if they're doing all their, their due diligence to make sure that wildlife, you know, that, that's the bigger concerns. How is it gonna affect our wildlife up there, you know, water quality, our air quality, and things like that?
That's pretty big, at four hundred acres too.
Yeah.
Uh, you know.
Well, well, Fry Quarry's three hundred acres, so we need to figure that.
But if we get into the bigger issue of it, do we have a say on those type of things, or do we have a say on things that have an impact to the city?
Well, from what I understand, um, the Young Ranch is trying to annex into Central City, which would basically take it out of the city's umbrella. So they move there, then the city has no.
That's what, that's where I was going with this, is, you know, I mean, well, they'll probably, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, well, the, the Department of Natural Resources, the way they kind of word this is a little misleading, because if, if we keep our right to testify at the next meeting, it's called an objection. While we're not necessarily objecting, we want more information. That's all we're looking for.
I think it's a good idea to have a seat at the table, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's, so it's kind of a misnomer in a way, and I, I feel the same way. I mean, potentially, there's a lot of questions. I mean, how many trucks a day, whatever, got to hit from the market, but, uh, but water quality is a big thing. Also, the historical society, uh, commented regarding, uh, uh, Indian grounds over there. There's quite a wide variety of questions.
Well, the fire burnt more than four hundred acres, though. That's more devastating, I think, than Rock Quarry. I mean, before the Parkway was built.
But, yeah, but, uh, I would, like I said, if, if, if we've got a migration area for, for.
Yeah, you know, I, again, for that.
I know, a lot, more than I want to know about with this highway, because we had to go through the, the section six and the, and the one oh, one oh six and the, you know, making sure that, that the.
Well, the, the truck traffic's usually gonna be on the Parkway, right, correct?
Right. The thing about that, it a little concerns me also, of course, I don't think this is our purview, is, um, the Fry Quarry, they go down Highway six for a reason. And that's because those trucks don't have to haul up or deal all that rock. And now you got a company that's gonna start running those trucks up that Ford Hill. How is that gonna affect?
I'll bet they'll get right off the two forty-four.
That Ford Hill?
Sure. There you go. They go right down the canyon to the rest of them.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying.
Very used to, they're blessed to there anyway. Plus, this will probably be a big awesome reservoir when they're done.
Or more. I have no.
I mean, that's typically what happens with those things. I just don't know that the city's a big concern with what the youngs want to do on their private property.
Yeah, well, if it does affect the private property, it'd be one thing, but I think we need to.
Like I said, I think air quality, water quality, wildlife mitigation and things like that.
Sure.
Is what I would be most concerned about. So why don't we schedule a work session, so we can, uh, we have to have these comments back by then?
Sure, fuse.
Uh, I believe it's the twenty, twenty-second, yes.
So let's do that. Let's have a work session on that and come up with, later, with some comments and, and give to the state. In the meantime, everybody can kind of do some of their own research and, um, giving your information that you've gathered, bring back to us.
Okay, yeah, the questions on the Young Ranch Reservoir, on Resource Corrid.
It says reservoir. Oh, no, it says resource. I know, it's these things that I agree.
You're wrong there.
Right, okay, now city attorney. You have anything else for us today?
Mayor, council, I do not, other than I'm, I'm glad to see half of your faces. This is really nice. I hope to see you again.
All right, thank you, Carmen. Okay, we're gonna move down to our ordinance, uh, first readings. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number fourteen, series two thousand twenty-one ordinance, except in the post-construction line of Cara.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Michael Hillman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Bob Olman.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Our pick of alley.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes, all right. Motion passes. We'll move to ordinance number fifteen. Do I have a motion?
I recommend that we approve ordinance number fifteen, series twenty twenty-one, and no ordinance amending section two dash three of the Idaho Springs Municipal Code to include the compensation of the city clerk and city treasurer after the November twenty twenty-one regional municipal election.
Regular.
Regular. Oh, I'm sorry, regular.
He's fogged up too.
I have a second. Bob's second. Discussion. Roll call.
Michael Hillman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Bob Olman.
Yes.
John Curtis. Eric Kikavelli.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes. All right, motion passes. Now we're gonna move to our ordinance second reading. And I think we suggested that, um, Jared give us, uh, a synopsis on, uh, the, uh, ordinance eleven.
Yes.
Jared?
Absolutely.
Hold on, sir, just open up a public hearing.
Well, we want to do the public hearing first?
Well, open it up and then ask.
Okay.
That's why we have.
Okay. Uh, this hearing will come to orders, a public hearing before the city council of the city of Idaho Springs to take testimony for consideration to approve ordinance eleven, series twenty twenty-one. An ordinance zoning the property recently annexed to the city as a cemetery annexation to the city of Idaho Springs as park and recreation under the city's zoning regulations. Uh, if there's any public comment or testimony, it will be sworn in by the city clerk. The order of this public hearing will be as follows. Applicant testimony, and then we'll hear any public testimony or comments that they'd like to make. This hearing is now open. It is seven twenty-three, and we're here to hear applicant testimony. Which is, where Jared's gonna come in.
All right.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. Before you this evening is the rezoning of the Idaho Springs Cemetery. So in late May, the city council approved an annexation for the cemetery parcel. It's about sixty-six point four-five acres. Um, and the client commission, well, staff recommended, and the client commission, uh, also recommended that this be rezoned to P for parks and recreation. With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
All right.
Does that designation specify cemeteries under that designation, parks?
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, is there any public comment?
As a homeowner who's probably bought something as a cemetery.
We're gonna have to have you come up and get sworn in before you make comment, please.
Oh.
Thank you.
How so? These are the testimony you're about to give. It's not true, the whole truth, nothing but truth and help you guide. I do, thank you.
State your name and where you reside, please.
Um, Jane Muralski, and I'm at nine forty-seven Chicago Creek Road. Um, and I just had a question. I just wanted to know, like, basically how this designation would affect us as homeowners, because our property is right up against the boundary of the cemetery. So would it change anything about the way that it is right now, or just offer it like more protection as a park? I guess I just want to know what it's all about.
Jared, would you like to, to answer that question for us?
Uh, yes, absolutely. So, uh, zoning the property as parks and recreation only allows for certain things to occur on the property. Cemetery, as, uh, uh, Councilperson panel mentioned, is indeed one of those items. Uh, so this formalizes it if, um, because we did have, uh, a couple of gentlemen who are interested in, um, the rezoning at the client commission, and they were concerned that it would, uh, that zoning it would create some form of development. That is, uh, that is not what is intended, and if for some reason, uh, development was sought in the future, there would have to be a rezoning again, and the public notes would have to go out to the surrounding property, or similar to the way it did this last time.
Did they answer your question?
I think they answered my question. I don't have anything further.
All right, thank you for your comments. Uh, do I have any other public comment or testimony? Right, hearing now, this hearing is now declared closed. It is seven twenty-five, and we'll go to council for discussion. Council? Questions?
Did, did Craig Morrow, did, did he resurvey the whole entire thing for the, the whole cemetery? Is this new or just illegal description?
I believe, if I may.
Oh, these newly created, newly created, new, shit, I don't know, or something, yeah, they, they dumped. Cool, wow.
And what was the zoning, refresh, or memory, what was the zoning prior to this?
Right, so, um, it was not zoned prior to this, so.
So it was, it was a county, it was in the county.
Correct.
Oh.
As a part of, um, the annexation, uh, so you can run a rezoning at the same time as the annexation. If you do not. If you do not, then you are allowed ninety days with, in which to rezone the property. So for the last ninety days, it's been annexed, but it hasn't had an actual zoning on the property. So we're trying to formalize that tonight.
So we will, so there'll be zone parks, then, yes, so it's safe, I mean, as far as that.
As I mentioned, there are very few things that can, uh, can go on at the park.
What is, um, what are the consequences for not rezoning within ninety days?
Yeah, good question.
Wonderful question. I do not recall seeing that within, uh, ordinance. I do not know if the annexation is null and void, or.
We, we, frankly, you'd get me telling you that you'd need to do it, and if you're not good for not doing it, because it is statutory mandate. Um, so you'd be looking at, at nothing being able to occur out there, and maybe an action in mandamus being filed in district court ultimately by some planning person saying, city, you haven't done your job. Um, that's what, practically speaking, we'd be looking at.
Well, it's a bit odd that we have a cemetery that wasn't, Idaho Springs Cemetery, it wasn't in Idaho Springs.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is odd.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Right.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number eleven, series twenty twenty-one, and ordinance zoning property recently annexed to the city as a cemetery annexation to the city of Idaho Springs as park and recreation, parentheses P, under the city's zoning regulations.
I have a second.
My second.
Are we still a public hearing or?
No, I, all right, discussion. Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Michael Hellman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Al Boland.
Yes.
John Curtis, Artic Avili.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes. Okay, um, we will move, our finance officers aren't here tonight. We will move down to the city administrator, administrator, um, items. And we're going to have John talk a minute about our trails construction proposal. John?
Mayor Council, a couple weeks ago, you approved the, the city staff to put out an RFP for trail constructions in segments three and seven, which is phase one of the Virginia Canyon Open Space Trails. Um, we received one proposal. It was from a qualified firm, and it came in at twelve thousand dollars under budget, which would give us some money to maybe do signage in the future, which is something we'll need to do to make sure that the trails are properly marked and everything. Well, right, concepts is out a week, Rick. They've done a lot of work in Clear Creek County already. They're familiar with our geographies. Um, they're familiar with the projects. They were originally involved as stakeholders at the very beginning of the Virginia Canyon Mountain Park planning process. They came in, gave some feedback about what kinds of trails I think are appropriate here. Um, we had asked for work to begin this September just to take advantage of the nice falls that we have in Idaho Springs. That seemed like it was unreasonable for them because they have a lot of projects through the metro area. They asked if they could start in December and still complete the trails in time for the next summer, which would be May completion date. Um, city staff thought that would be acceptable. Um, if you approve this proposal this evening, we can give them notice to proceed immediately, and they can start working on making sure that everything is good to go for when they do mobilize and come up with it. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to hear them answered.
Thanks, John. Questions, council?
You said five months, thinking, do you know that?
Yeah, this first, this first trail segment is not as complicated as some of the mountain bike trails. It's the hiking trail for the most part, and so we want to make sure that we have hiking trails available to all the residents of the city.
Impressive to me.
Yeah, some of the work, if you look at the pictures, there is very impressive rock work that they've done up there, and it really minimized the, the, you know, kind of degradation of the environment and build a really cool experience there, so. They're also interested, if we are able, CPW has just published their new grant rounds, and if we decide that we want to go for more trails up there, they're interested in participating in some of that project too. And as a local company, you know, it's a good connection to have, I think.
And this, weather permitting, it's a twelve-month trail system, isn't it?
Not likely. So in the, in the early spring, we made a deal with CPW to close the trails because of lambing. We're not, we're pretty confident that lambing doesn't occur in that area. It's mostly male sheep up there. But CPW just feels more comfortable with that, so we will try to minimize our activity there, uh, through March. And then we did make a deal with CPW on the grant as well that allows dogs in the, in the park as long as they're leased, but they may be required to be removed if we have problems with the interactions with the sheep up there.
But it's a winter time trail.
It should be available, like, through February, I believe. It's when they're supposed to close it.
It's almost all self-facing too, as far as.
Yeah, weather, conditions there will be very nice. And of course, we have the permanent easements across the Argo property that get the access into the system. So there should be good year-round walking access. That was what CPW sold on, is that nearly every resident of the city can walk through these trails, so.
All right, any other questions for John? All right, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve proposal from Polri Concepts in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars to construct phase one trails in B C M P.
In a second. Just a second, I got it. John's second. All right, any more discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Michael Hellman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Al Boland.
Yes.
John Curtis, Artic Avili.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes, that motion passes. Great, uh, we had our safe bill, a report. If you took a look at that, and we moved down to city clerk Diane.
Mayor Council, I have my separate report for your review with one request for action.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to approve Andrew Marsh to sign on all accounts with citywide banks and every national bank.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Michael Hellman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Al Boland.
Yes.
John Curtis, Artic Avili.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes. All right, any questions for Diane?
Does that just give him the signer? He's a signer now, right?
He's a signer now.
So we'd have to approve someone else if he left and took somebody else to do the job with, do that each time?
Yes. I'm, I'm sure he has on how many petitions have been picked up?
Five, I think.
I'm sorry?
Five.
Five?
Okay, can you bring it down?
Uh, Chuck Harmon.
Oh, I was asking, but. That's what I was thinking.
Brandon Williams, um. Can't, can't remember.
Kuyt Collier.
Kuyt Collier, Kent Slaymaker, and Scott Mount M D.
All right, and we, and, um, the petitions can be picked up, and when are they due?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third of this month. Okay, so pick them up anytime and have them in by the twenty-third.
Cool.
All right, any other questions for Diane? All right, um, PD.
Uh, Mayor Council, you have the staff report. You have one request for action for the Edward Byrne Memorial Grant, that you'd like to apply for. It's basically is for technology, another technology upgrade for the officers. As explained in the memo, you will all have that memo there, it's on, available if you have any questions.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to approve by S P D to apply and manage the F Y twenty twenty-one Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Program.
I have a second.
Say it.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Michael Hellman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Al Boland.
Yes.
John Curtis, Artic Avili.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes. All right, we have any other questions for chief? All right, thanks, chief. We will move to public parks, streets, parks, water, wastewater, coffee shop, everything junked in?
Uh, Mayor Council, you have a gap important for you, and I do have, um, three requests for action.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars to Terricon Consultants for material testing and inspection services for project one of the public works building construction from twenty-one hundred dash five one oh three.
You have a second. A second. All right, motion second, discussion. So this was an additional, additional cost for the inspections?
Yes, it is. It's an independent contractor who will do the concrete testing, say if we have a, a local concrete company and we specify a a certain grade of concrete, they basically verify this is what you're doing. And if we specify a certain rebar, if we specify how that rebar is tied in a wall, and how the pilings or anything are set, they will verify it for that.
So this is a third-party inspection.
Correct.
Check.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's required? Is it required that we do this, or?
Um, I don't know that it's required. It's absolutely something that I would do.
Yeah.
Or else you may be getting drywall mud for concrete.
I think we're going to do that test, test on a project like that.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I guess it's standard practice. You can say it's standard.
It is, it's not required.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call.
Michael Hellman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Al Boland.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon. Artic Avili.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes. All right, we have a second item for approval. Do I have a motion?
Okay, I'd move to approve seventeen thousand two hundred dollars to J V A Engineering Inc. for civil engineering services related to Sixteenth and Wall Street from line item twenty-one hundred dash fifty-three, fifty-one oh three.
I have a second.
My second.
Discussion.
Yeah, are these bills that have already, are already obligated for, or this would just be additional work?
No, this is, uh, additional work. This is basically the draft of construction documentation and, uh, construction oversight, surveying, that type of thing.
It's refrigeration of the drainage pans.
Yes.
I think they talk about it.
Right. Any other discussion? Go call.
Michael Hellman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Al Boland.
Yes.
John Curtis, Artic Avili.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes. All right, the third item, do I have a motion, please?
I move to approve one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to J V A Engineering, Inc. for engineering services and project coordination for Idaho Springs Transit Center from twenty-one hundred dash fifty-one oh three.
I have a second.
My second.
And discussion.
Yeah, I guess up to date on this, I'm not quite sure.
So, so what we needed to do, um, as you remember, we passed, um, a few weeks ago, bringing H D R on to help us, uh, do the programming for this project.
Yes.
Um, J V A, our city engineers, this is, they're going to be doing, they're surveying the geotech work, uh, looking at the roads and how they're all going to be connected. So that's what this service is all about in J V A. So they may have, I believe it was, four subs, was it four subs?
Correct, but what, as you said, they have the engineering, uh, walker, parking, and, um, I don't remember.
Walker for the surveying?
Yeah, walker for survey. Basically, J V A is coordinating all of these different, uh, disciplines for this project.
Any other questions? Go call.
Michael Hellman.
Yes.
Scott Canel.
Yes.
Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Al Boland.
Yes.
John Curtis, Artic Avili.
Yes.
Jim Park.
Yes. Passes. All right, uh, good work all our department heads and attorney. And let's see, we will move down a couple things, uh, that I'd like to talk about. Um, first, um, if you didn't know already, our local, um, young lady was part of the U S volleyball team, and they won a gold medal. Um, the advertisement in our, and our participation in our community was great. Um, she actually went to school with a couple of my kids, and, uh, uh, it's a thrill. This is, you know, it's not every day that you can say that we have a gold Olympian from our community. So what's been talked about, and John's been kind of going back and forth, is, um, we, we would, and, uh, a lot of the community members would like to, to put on an event for Haley. Um, Haley will be here on the twenty-first. Some things that they're asking that John and I have been talking about, that I'm a little concerned, that I'd like some input from everybody, um, is that they're, they're wanting to do a parade on a Saturday at four o'clock through downtown. And I'm a little concerned, you know, of as many people that we have here on Saturdays and Sundays, and then trying to clear a street at four o'clock, you know, in the afternoon to go down Minor Street. Um, John and I have been talking about some of those, and then also they're asking to close down Sixteenth Street, and having a band and booze and free food for the downtown, um, in, in the park. Um, so my concern one is the safety of the public. That's my number one, uh, interest, and, you know, as many people, it, it's been crazy. If you've been downtown the last several weeks, uh, I mean, and nobody cares. The visitors don't care, or they're driving anyway, they're parking on any street they want to, they're parking the wrong way, going the wrong way. So it kind of concerns me. I'd really like to figure out a way that we can do something, uh, you know, really nice, but modest. And I really think that would be better for the event, um, and the booze and whatever you're going to do, to be done at the football field or the.
Ball fields.
Ball fields. And this is kind of what we're, we're trying. Uh, we're putting, we're getting a big, uh, uh, we've got a couple of members of the community up, putting up a big fuss, uh, that say this is a once-in-a-lifetime, you know, unfortunately, and she probably going to have, for us just to close down Minor Street, I mean, to open up Minor Street, and they want fire trucks to go down the middle. We know how narrow it is. Now, if it's an emergency and a fire truck, and they have barrels that people have set up, that's one thing. I'm just a little concerned about trying to do this, closing off, we saw closing off Sixteenth Street on Fourth of July, what bigger problem that was. So closing off Sixteenth, and then, of course, uh, offering free food in the park, and that, this should be a community event, in my opinion. People that know her, went to school with her, family, uh, the Washington, who have been in this community for a long time, that's what it should be about. If we're giving away free barbecue and free Mexican food downtown, we're going to have some business centers to upset. Because why to go to Bojangles, or why to go to Main Street, or why to go to anybody else if I can walk to the park and get, I don't know, smoking yards party. So, any suggestions or thoughts from council of how we should try to, to make this happen, or chief, do you have any ideas or thoughts?
Uh, I agree about the, the safety issue. Uh, even when we did the, uh, high school graduation, we were still early in our setup, so there was more room, and now everything is sort of where it is. So, um, I, I mean, I would almost suppose if they wanted to do something where they were walking, or something like that, down, down, and, you know, people sort of cheering, and then having an after event maybe in, in one of the locations you've mentioned, uh, might be a, uh, I don't know, that, that would be sort of my, my two cents on that.
Council?
I really understand the wow factor of the parade, that, you know, it's, uh.
Yeah, yeah, and for sure, but I think she's right, and you're right too, that.
But I, I think they could get that cool factor, you know, down at the.
At the ball fields.
What we're striving to do anyway, kind of.
The other thing about that is, closing down Sixteen, doing something like this is especially, works especially bad. And normally, it's sixty days, sixty days in advance. Um, I've noticed as a special occasion, and I think we all should participate in it, because this is probably a once-in-a-lifetime, probably not going to be able to. Our business, shake hands and hug, uh, you know, an Olympian gold medalist.
Yeah.
You know, so, so I think that, but, uh, we have to look at the safety of our.
I agree. I think it could be cool down there, down at the ball fields, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I, I agree.
You know why?
It's a species.
I think we ought to set up a freaking volleyball net. Let's go at it.
There you go, man.
Right? Let's have some volleyball games down there.
All of us against her.
Yeah. Yeah, right, right, yeah. Chill on one side of your stadium. Oh, we have to do, throw it, and she'll smash it right back. So John and I will continue to work with, uh, the people that have been contacting us, Diane and Wunder as well, because they've been, they've been asked as well. I know they've probably gotten some pressure, um, from some people, and we just want to do something really nice for Haley, but we want to make our community safe, and I really think that it should be more for community members, friends, family, and people that I've known.
Way older.
All these years.
Yeah.
Okay, got that, John?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's see, okay, another thing that I'd like to talk about real quick, meetings, in-person meetings. Um, every time I watch the news, we're seeing a rising tick of across the nation. And I think it's going to get worse before it gets better. We have, uh, I believe my wife told me, Safeway says mask required, Walmart mask required, Costco mask required. So I believe, and council please weigh in on this, um, I think it would be safe to everybody, uh, if we just went ahead and went back to Zoom meetings.
All right.
And just do them until we get past this, uh, we don't know how long it's gonna be, but I, you know, I know everybody's not comfortable with the mask on, but we, we, we work through it from this point. Uh, how does, how does council feel about going back to Zoom? Uh, how does, how does council feel about going back to Zoom? That's right, everybody support that, yeah.
For sure.
Um, John?
Uh, mayor and council, I still have laptops for some of you, so if you make time to come see me, I can get you set up with a new laptop that'll have all your stuff on it. Go use that.
Alright. Alright, uh, that's all I have written down to, to update. How about a history lesson about?
Oh.
Chief.
Uh, I'm coordinating with John tonight. We're gonna be talking about the cannon. In the front of the library, and if, uh, I don't know if you can clear that up a little bit on the muzzle. Anyways, uh.
What millimeter is that?
Uh, it's actually four point six five inch.
Wow.
Uh, it's called a Napoleon cannon, uh, designed by a French, so named after Napoleon the Third. And it's an eighteen fifty-seven model. Uh. It was, uh, it used a crew for, uh, people who were all, the, the teamsters as well as the cannon, a firing crew and so on. And it's called a twelve pound cannon because the, the iron ball that it shot was, uh, a little over twelve pounds, but that's kind of what it grounded off to. It's a smooth bore, uh, was accurate enough to about a mile away and, uh, with the spherical ball. And, uh, they would often drop the ball in front of the enemy lines and it would bounce and, uh, through, uh, people, fortifications, everything. And cause a lot more damage bouncing along the ground, and it might go for another mile and kill forty, fifty people.
Wow.
And so they were deadly, and even the muzzle blast on this thing is deadly within, uh, off to the side. About a hundred feet out to about two hundred feet. It's a, a kill zone in front of the cannon. This particular, uh, cannon, uh, it's, uh, it's bronze, what's called gunmetal. That expands slightly, uh, you don't wanna build a cannon this size out of iron. And, uh, so it, uh, was quite accurate for a, uh, smooth bore. And, uh, it had other kinds of the shot, can, like canister shots that did have inside explosives. The spherical cannonballs were, were solid and shattered sometimes, but they did not explode, but the canister shots were good to about three hundred yards accuracy. But anyway, this cannon, uh, casting number one hundred, it was from the, uh. This particular, uh, casting is from, and I, you can't quite read it, it's, uh, the Henry, uh, what, H, H and H?
Yeah.
Henry Hooper, uh, Foundry out of Boston, and it actually is the, the name of the people that took over Paul Rivera's original brass foundry. And bronze foundry in, in Boston, was a fairly small manufacturer of these cannons. The North manufactured about eleven hundred of these cannons. The South, uh, manufactured about six hundred, uh, and there were, there were differences, but they were still based on this particular size. So anyway, uh, this was cast in, uh, eighteen sixty-three. And that he, uh, JR on the bottom is for Thomas J. Rodman, who was the ordinance officer who inspected the cannon before the army took possession of it. And he, he is a story in his own right, very colorful and rather controversial. But anyway, uh, so the interest, this cannon was cast in eighteen seventy-three and it likely did see action. In, uh, the Civil War, and it was donated to Idaho Springs by, uh, Civil War veteran contingent. Uh, I'm not sure when, but a long time ago, and do you have that, uh, one photograph? I don't, that's the one I can get on my computer. I've got it on my phone. Oh, okay, alright, no problem. Anyway, there are, uh, four, uh. Union, uh. Veterans, uh, there, and much after the Civil War here in Idaho Springs, when that cannon was delivered in front of the library. And one of them appears to be trying to light it. The other one has a sword, the other one has his, uh, big old long rifle. And, uh, they were all quite elderly at the time, but anyway, uh, this was donated by, uh, the organization, and again, it's casting one hundred, it's a pretty rare, uh, cannon. And so that's the story about that.
What year were they there with the?
I, I, you know, I don't know what year it was donated. I could not find that out. I think it was right at the turn of the century, right in there. Yeah.
So my little story about the cannon, and I was here when we did, when we refurbished it. And the wheels on it were, I mean, it, it was fixing to fall over.
It, it did fall over. It was propped up in the middle.
Oh, that's right. And, um, I heard that somebody was wanting those wheels off of it to take to his house. Um, this gentleman's name is Bruce Bell. And when I heard that, I called Chi Chi and I said, Chi Chi. I think Bruce wants the wheels off this cannon. She said, there's so much junk over here, don't you get. Everybody's laughing because they have, there's so much junk over here, don't you dare let him have those. About that time, I'm driving down Minor Street and Jesse's over there taking those things. Bruce Bell's taking them off and, you know, Bruce, I wouldn't say anything to him. But he's what, eighty-five? How old is he Bob? Eighty-five?
Oh, ninety-two.
Ninety-two, yeah, he's got, he still has more energy than I've got.
Oh, unbelievable.
So.
You know, one other little additional thing that, uh, my, uh, family told me about through the years that after, uh, and I'm not sure the year of this either. But some local, uh, wayward youth, I guess I would say, uh. Either put black powder, but probably a, a half a stick of dynamite or so in the thing. And did fire it and they glued the front of the muzzle off. That's been recast and you can see the seam in there. The story is true. And it broke essentially every window in that first block, particularly, uh, the old west.
I wonder who that bandit in the back is.
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, pretty bad. So anyway, that did actually happen and hence it was filled up with cement afterwards. But Bruce Bell wanted to restore it. He actually dug the concrete out of it. Amazing. I don't know how he did it, but in any case, it was restored, uh, that it cost twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, several years ago, and it's deteriorating pretty badly again, so I think that the city. Really needs to pick up its game in terms of maintenance of this.
I agree.
And, uh, it's, I also took some other pictures of it today and then.
The wood splitting, the wheels, the spokes were splitting and, and beginning to.
It, it's unfortunate, the twenty-two thousand dollars that Bob's talking about was, uh, Bruce Bell was largely behind, uh, that money being raised.
Yeah.
It was restored. To a T, I mean, to the point where the paint spec was matched. For the paint that you see on it today, for Civil War accuracy. And unfortunately, uh, we ran into a buzzsaw trying to get some type of cover over the cannon so wood didn't deteriorate. Yeah, it was a bit of a problem, but it does, uh, some of the, uh, appliances, the iron appliances and chains and so on that were restored as part of the original cannon. Are now missing again, and, uh, it's some of them on one side at least, and so I think we need, we really do need to, uh, make care of it. I did kind of do this, interested in working with us on the restoration and might work with us on a, on a, uh. Foundation basis to maybe do it, do the work. They, they do this work on these cannons specifically, so. Yeah, right. Make sure it's good, so, no, I'm all about it after we seen it today. Oh, one last thing. This has been a very long.
I had that gavel.
Sorry.
I tried, Carmen. You blame it on Bob.
Yeah, just, at least it was a short meeting to begin with. Uh, you know, uh, the one picture that John could not, upon the screen tonight, it does show, uh, these four veterans there and that pedestal, the, uh. Was raised above the grass probably eight inches, I'd guess roughly, and so indeed, and I'm trying to figure out if it's the same height as the sidewalk, you know, where the grass grew up on one side. Well, the fact is, the grass was below the sidewalk and the pedestal. It was a step down to get into the library yard. So anyway, uh, that's all.
Alright, anything else, council? Alright, it's eight o'clock. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting.